It looks right.
Yeah, well, that was on the wish tab.
I wasn't watching it. I don't know. I'm thinking it was planned. This is what I would like to perform, so. There we go. So, yeah. Okay. Great. Sorry to show it for the. Okay. Great. Hey Sean, sorry for the, we had a technical glitch on our end, so apologies.
Thanks for letting us know.
Yes, that was important. Are we all set to move on to the next item then? So this is the application for, is it Manisha and? You're sorry?
Manisha.
Manisha? And are you related? So you're gonna be doing the work there?
So you're Sean.
Oh, you're Sean. Okay, Sean, Sean's great.
Yes.
Welcome. Okay. Alright, so this, because I reviewed this application before the meeting to try to get a handle on what was going on. A couple of things I wanted to make sure to mention. First of all, I think that so far the application was looking quite good. I find a lot of sufficient details that were really good. That was helpful.
It's a workaround a lot, so we try to do as carefully as possible.
That, that helps, you know? So, so thank you for that, for adding some clarity. I looked at it online, so. The color was helpful. It was easy to understand this when I was making it and stuff. So that's pretty good. I did notice that. It is close to the water. Five feet or something, maybe a little bit more, seven, call it eight.
Yeah, it is, it is close.
Yep. And this entire, or this structure was part of something that had been.
It was a condominium association, which we act as all, so now everybody did their own.
Right, which is interesting.
Yeah, this came to us earlier. It was a workaround.
Yeah. Yeah. And. Right, I can't remember. Was it, was it?
Their attorney after we.
Yes, yes, that. That's what it was about.
How long ago?
Maybe three months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, not that long. We started the process last spring.
Yeah.
It's been a process.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt. Um. And I know the attorney in the summary document or summary that he gave to us. A letter that says.
Yeah.
Pointed to some very specific things about why it should work. Cited. Both the minimum lot size ordinance as well as the shoreline zoning ordinance. So from his perspective, it's looking good. I want to make sure that the plan board also feels the same way. I did, I did have a question when the time is right. George, when last application, there was talk about we go. Basically increasing non-conformity. I have a little, a little. Portion where I'm wondering if that's doing that.
I have the same question.
Okay.
I have the same question. This is different than the last application. In the sense that nothing's been being removed between the camp and the lake. But in this case, it's all an expansion within 25 feet, so that part of the ordinance is. I think comes into play in this one, even though I had kind of got the wrong end of the stick on the last one.
Yeah, but that is a good, it's a very good point. We should probably always be prepared to point to the ordinance, you know, saying what is and what is not allowed at that time.
Just so everybody's clear, the, and on page nine, this has to do with expansion of non-conforming structures. Provision that reads, expansion of any portion of a structure within 25 feet of the normal high water line of water body. Is prohibited, even if the expansion will not increase non-conformity.
So to put that in real terms for what's being proposed, Sean, what we're looking at, I don't want to jump in.
No, go ahead.
Please let me know. What I'm thinking of when I hear that part is, is on the. The site drawing, and then it shows what's being proposed. There's an area to the. Kind of north, I guess it would be.
Yeah.
That is like where stuff is going to get built. And so that's running parallel to the water. Right? There's, there's a distance from the water back 25 feet.
Right.
That encompasses part of this, and it would be.
Most of it.
Yeah, I'd have to, because it looks like 12 to 18, too many crickets, yeah. Yeah, yeah, exactly, right. Then, then the next, the next drawing will shows scale of one to two feet.
Yeah, one to two feet.
Oh. Yeah, but still, if you had the 12 plus six, it's 18, plus another eight to the water, so it seems like. A lot of that part that's being posed is within the 25 feet, which according to the ordinance that we just pointed to and referenced. That can't happen there.
Yeah. If this was set back further, like 75 feet, it would be a different set of rules.
Yeah, there's no way.
Yeah, right.
75 feet to build forever, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
That wouldn't be good.
Yeah. Yeah. So that, that's an area of concern. Right, for us, that would be, it would not be permitted, so. So, go ahead.
You know, there's some trees and stuff back there in the sector. It looks like it did move back 10 feet. And now it put in front of 25 feet.
Are you saying the whole structure? If you're willing to do so.
Is it on a foundation now?
It's not, it's on a post right now.
Was it gonna remain on post?
No, we're on a foundation, so that erosion issues from the camp.
So you could move it back 10 feet?
There's a big L right behind the house, and if we push the house back 10 feet, we'll give it a root system of that, that tree will probably have to get, it's got a pretty good can of view. So trying to keep the house in its current location and not push back into the root system.
Yeah, but you're not gonna be able to do it the way it is. So if we get back to 26 feet. Even had to replant a tree, a couple of trees to replace that tree. So probably feasible.
It's tied up to see. See what kind of room we have down there for long, but there is some comeback, yes, if we get rid of the tree.
Because this is still considered a non-conforming structure. And then how you say, right, we're in agreement, like this is a non-conforming structure.
But it'd be under 1,000 square feet, so if you were to move it back beyond the 25.
Correct.
It could still be done.
Yep. Yep. Yeah.
Footprint's not a problem.
Right. Right. And.
Hope they move it back, you can go to a greater height too. On the building.
Right, right now, we're, we're designed 20 feet.
Yeah, so those will be alternative. Get that.
It'll remain at 20 feet.
Probably, there's change in the design, you actually would do place that.
Because it. It, it has to be 20 feet for the dis, or the height of the existing structure.
I don't. Is it 23 or 25?
20 feet.
It's 20. 25.
Yeah. That's it, so.
Well, it's.
25.
Yeah, 20, 25 was it?
Or, or the height of the structure, existence structure.
Very great.
25, okay, I'm sorry. Anyway.
Right. So I don't want to put a kibosh on this, just want to make sure we're talking about this in a way that makes sense.
No, I want to be transparent with everything.
Yeah. Understood. So, so what's being, what's in front of us now, what is proposed, has an issue, right? With the, with the proposed expansion within 25 feet. And as you think, you heard us talk. The ordinance talks about page nine where that's prohibited. So, that's that part. So one way to do something with like a bird's eye view to do, accomplish the same thing. It would be to push the entire thing. Back beyond 25 feet, which is, I think, what Craig was, had recommended. In, I'm not sure how palatable that would be for the owner.
I mean, if that's what it is, push it back to 25 feet, make everything work down there.
And I do hear what you're saying about that big resource that, you said it now.
It's got a pretty good camp, you know, so the root system.
The expansions to the back and to the side, I, that's just for more living space, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's what we thought. Oh, that's right, yeah. Now that I look at that.
Oh, I see the thing is, there's big trees. And this is 50.
To make it more like, to mark, you just need to move like 10 feet past. So that, that big tree is beyond that, the way, the way that drawing.
Yeah.
You know, by the scale. So when I always, when Greg came with the ideas and, oh my God, you gotta, you know, like, there's that trees.
We get into digging foundation, oh, push back before. It was already close, you think it's terminal, so if I push it back, stuff would be.
So that, you know, this discussion raises another question in my mind. That is, since. A board foundation is going to replace it on a post. It may need to be moved with, to the greatest practical extent away from the lake.
Yep.
That would be the greatest practical stone. 10 feet is all I can get, otherwise it's going to be pushing on to the. Proper, well.
Hmm. No. I, I agree with what you're saying. I was just disagreeing with, with the amount of feet according to the one to five scale drawing. That's all, right?
Yeah, I mean, if there's any seed play there.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So it's a question of what's most important to the client, you know, the foundation versus the expansion out the back, or.
Right. It, it.
We're on a slab. You put it on the slab.
Same, same issue.
Yeah, just because of the grade and stuff, it's there.
So, so that when Sean leaves, he has a clear understanding of some of the options. So far, are we making sense, first of all?
Oh, yeah.
Making your life miserable, making sense.
Well, so maybe the plan board or Hans can help me make sure I'm saying this correctly, but if right now, where there's some proposed expansion that's on the front side of, not front side. The side of the camp that's closest to the water. As you know. Some of that proposed stuff is within. 10 feet, 15 feet. Right? Am I right? So for Pope, for this bird's eye view to be permitted in the future, or at a time when we can review this application. Would it not be the case that that move back more than 10 feet? It gets to be on 25 feet? It'd be more, more like 15 feet?
Yeah, yeah, there's really two issues here. The one is going to be moved back to the greatest practical extent if you want a foundation. New foundation, and the second issue is. Can any expansion be done within, beyond 25 feet?
Right.
Normal high water.
Right.
Or what expansion can't be.
Yeah.
On the side, you know, at the moment. It's basically a five by five square.
Right.
That's. The rest of it could not be approved by us.
And so that's a point that. We may not have been here yet on, on this. Um. So, looking down on this, if this whole thing will move back, you know, beyond 25 feet, so that the front of the camp was beyond 25 feet, right? There's an area that's being proposed. That goes towards the water. Right, that's what we're saying.
No.
I do.
Where's the, oh, the water's up here. The additions are to the side.
And maybe that's, they are to the side, but it, the first square, oh. No, it goes to the side, but maybe I'm wrong on this. Let, let me know if I'm not thinking about it correctly, but it doesn't exist now.
Right.
And if yours. Would that.
So within the 15 feet, it's not absolutely possible. But there's nothing going in front of the structure as it is now.
Right, not in front of the structure. My question is, and I'm not saying it can't happen, I'm just asking. It's not in front of the overall structure now towards the water, but it's going in that direction from that bump out. Does that cause an issue? Does that increase non-conformity?
Well, it's also going to the right.
I agree.
Just.
I agree.
I would take care of that. And so which one are you gonna call?
I don't know. I'm just asking, call it to the right. Just asking.
So the expansion to the right, all of that that's within 25, assuming that the camp and stage in the same location. All, all of the proposed expansion on the right there that's within 25 feet. Even though it makes it, regardless of whether it's more or not conforming or not, we can't approve.
Right. Correct.
Listen, I guess I don't understand what you guys are debating.
What I'm debating is that we move this whole dang thing back.
Right.
Right, so this whole square of that.
Right.
Okay, if we're looking at it, the front of this is beyond 25 feet. Is there anything about the proposed structure that's increasing non-conformity?
So what he's asking, does it go forward or does it go to the right?
Yeah.
And I say it goes to the right.
Yeah, see, I think it's irrelevant.
I think it is too.
And I think it's whatever's within 25 feet, we can't.
No, no, no.
If it was moved back.
You're saying the whole thing.
If it's moved beyond. So you can't build closer, even though it's beyond 25 feet.
Oh.
So that's what he's asking, but I don't see where that's a question, because it's just extending the side over.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, because if that side wasn't there, then it should be going closer, but where I started there, you're not going in closer than what the front of the campus.
And I can live with that. I just wanted to make sure we talked about it, because if he comes back with something, then there's a question about it. Didn't want to have someone be in trouble at that point.
I'll make sure I'm with the three of you.
But that, that only becomes a question if the camps move back.
Correct, I'm assuming.
A considerable distance.
Yes.
Because more than 25 feet or more. Which doesn't sound to me like it's feasible.
Be back into the culminating.
Yeah.
So, I guess what I guess it's saying is, well, what is in blue here? We cannot let that happen as it is. That's why I understand the discussion, because it's, it's within.
25.
The 25.
Correct.
So that blue, that's blue section cannot happen right now.
Correct.
But if it is moved back, it doesn't matter. It can, if, if this whole thing is translated back.
Yeah.
They can do that.
Then it becomes all an issue of how far back they move it.
So the, the.
If they move it.
If they can, yeah.
So when, when you do this job, you're gonna just jack the house up and do the foundation?
The existing house that's there, we want to completely demo it, new foundation.
Oh, so.
Completely build from ground up.
So, so transform. So, so practical extent does come into play. Right?
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah, regardless of the foundation.
Right, so let me just say this, okay, and board members, tell me if I'm going down the wrong path. Um, when I read the application, I saw the word transform camp from seasonal to year round. That is not the same to me as saying raise and replace. Because that's what's going to happen, it sounds like. You're gonna flatten the old one and then build it in.
Okay.
The old one isn't structurally sound, make it.
So. Makes sense.
And a lot of what's going on there, jack out the foundation.
Makes sense.
Yeah, no, then the ordinance is, becomes quite crystal clear.
Yep, it's gonna move back, actually, right?
You know, to the greatest practical extent, and that's a judgment call.
Yeah.
Or.
So then that said, if you're gonna do that, I guess the concept of moving back is in play. But I would say, why don't you just then move back, back or to the side of diagonal to a place where you don't mess around with the entry? I don't know, that's something that you can play with. Or not.
There may be a little bit of room there, but it's small.
Trying to help you out.
What you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the, the first idea was just to move the whole thing back, it's.
Right.
We thought you were jacking this up and move and creating the position, moving back, but you're starting from scratch, so you actually can just translate, instead of just moving back, you can move to the. Farmost corner that you can without touching the entry. And if you're, basically, if we're doing all this stuff, you can basically construct around the. The entry, that matter. I just don't know how much space you have towards the right and back. I have no idea. I mean, it seems to me that all this area is open right here, you know, to me. I just don't know how close you can get to the proper line. But I suspect that there's a. The owner has an idea of, there's a reason why she wants to keep it that way, or they want to keep it that way, so.
Yeah, the view where the house is sitting right now was awesome. If we bump it to the left, you have to put a wall of trees in front of the house. Shoreline, gotcha.
Yeah, I can see, again, the, the, the drawing, you've got trees, trees are marked. So I can see that, exactly what you're saying, if you go back and go to the left, then you.
There's a lot of litigation of the left, too, that would have to be.
On the, on the trees that you can, what, prune them up from the, from the ground up to what, one third of the height?
Oh, for living purposes, so that, I, I see, rather than removing.
Right.
Tree, I see.
So you can get into that piece of the law, and that will allow, on the first order, to see, have the view, you know?
Yeah.
That's another way to skin a cat.
Yeah.
So. Have you, have you got a copy of the ordinance, you know, the ordinance or any ordinance? It's, it's, it's kind of long, it's complicated, but. If you're gonna be in the business. Like a good idea that I copied something. And that's, anyway, that's available.
Go ahead, George.
Um, just a basic question for you, Sean. The, on the first page of the application. That has to do with wastewater, number six. It asks when the property was purchased and it's November 2021. Is that when it was actually purchased, or is that when it was split off from the condo, the condos?
That was when she actually purchased the lot.
Oh, it is when actually purchased the lot, okay.
The condo dissolution happened this summer.
Right, that's right.
She was in the process of dissolving the condominium association while purchasing it, so all kind of.
Okay.
At the same time, because whether she was able to dissolve condominium association, for what, either her purchasing the lot or not, she couldn't dissolve that, that.
And was, was she. She was one of the principals of the condominium association, right? She was one of the owners of the association of the. What, the reason I'm asking is.
She had no connection with the association.
Had none.
Before purchasing the house.
Okay, so, all right.
Purchase of the house is when she set forth to dismantle the association, and that was what, you know, made her decide whether or not she would purchase, or whether or not the lawyers could dissolve the association.
Okay, the, the reason I'm asking on all these questions is because there's a provision where, when for properties in the shoreline zone that are purposed after November 2018. Part of the application has to include a inspection of the septic system.
There was a separate inspection done at the time they purchased it, but they all share a common.
Right, no, I, I understand that. We don't have that, though, and we, we would need it as part of the application. That's. The whole point of my questions, that's all. If you got it, great.
She didn't have one done with.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. Yeah.
I would imagine she has a record of that.
I'm pretty sure she has, because she had inspected, she was pretty thorough with the process.
Yeah, no. And a lot of banks require it now, anyway. Um, while we're on wastewater, question for you, well, either you or Sean, actually. So since this is a conversion to a four-season dwelling. Um, have you issued a permit for that purpose? Because under the state plumbing code. Is required a, that, that is, and under our shoreline zoning ordinance, that requires a permit from you.
You put drill.
Conversion, conversion to.
You're talking about drill, well.
No, I'm talking about conversion to, from a seasonal to a four, four-season dwelling unit, and it's really more about the wastewater.
Oh, yeah, well, full septic system.
Well, you gotta get a permit, though.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And so we need that per, permit.
Right. Yes. Okay, you're beating around the bush, I couldn't quite say where you're going with it. Something is gonna get.
I mean, it's a longstanding main law. It's back to the seventies, I guess. Um. So that, that's something else we'll need.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're familiar with that. It's for whenever. Structures converted from seasonal to four-season. So I, I don't know what the process is. This is frank, since I've been on the plan board since 2015 is the first one we've seen.
Yeah.
There used to, used to be a flood of them, but back in the seventies and eighties, but.
And just stepping backwards a minute, on page two of this Jensen Bard document, it talks about the septic and the sharing too.
Yeah.
That satisfies.
No, this is for you, actually. These are the regulations that deal with it from the state plumbing program.
Is that because of the total gallonages for a year round?
Yeah, yeah, right. It has to do with the increase in, in gallonage.
Yeah, so that's all, that's about.
Just ensure that the system's adequate for that much increase in use.
And they're gonna maintain just the one that.
Yeah. So that, you know, normally that would be the driving issue, but in this case, it's the fact that it's being converted to four-season use.
I think the, the advocate there, you can call the state. Who's the founder of the state? The call. For septic system, that's where it, right? Yeah, you know, and you can get that information by calling, was an officer, and you could. You know, you can get introduced yourself to Grant there. And he's very, you know, good guy to deal with, can help you out a lot.
Okay, any other points to bring up?
Uh, just another easily resolved. Piece of missing information, and that is, as you heard in the last one, we will need a letter of authorization from your client, from the landowner, for you to represent them. from the landowner, for you to represent them.
It's usually pretty easy to get. Then, can you nail that to Hans?
Okay.
Please? And if, if there's, if there's gonna be, um, uh, excavation going on, we would need a certified contractor.
Um, I thought about that the other day. Where we were at, I wasn't sure which ground guy I was moving forward with, just something near, and everybody's busy. You know, I confirmed with Jeff Higgins the other day. Jeff is out of state, he's in Pennsylvania right now, but as soon as he gets back, I think the middle of next week, I can give you his number.
No problem, I just wanted you to know that going forward, this would be, that's something would ask of anybody. And we know that sometimes things happen even at the last minute, because sometimes you have to line up resources to do stuff, and we get it. But it would be one of those things that even, if you, even if you're getting it at the last minute, we just ask that that be provided to the, to the town, that's all. We don't have to have it, like, when we're talking about it, but we would have maybe a condition to say, before you do anything, make sure.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
She's getting on a plane when I called him the other day, so.
Do we have any other things to, to either ask?
Yeah.
With that solution, you mean erosion control? Lot of other stuff, yes.
So, that's all the waters that you scan behind it, and still saw.
And said, oh, that'd be. If they want. Good point.
That could be just shown on the site plan.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, so I have a question for the board. Knowing that we've talked about some things that, that sort of put this one, this particular application in, I'm gonna say in jeopardy. Do you wish to have us table it, and then you go back and consult with, with?
Sure.
Yes. So, board, is that a good plan?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's how we treat it, dealt with the Alfon application, which is, you know, totally in someone.
Right, this, we're trying to be consistent, so.
No, we're here, so, uh, I'll go over there, we'll see if we can bump back on hold there.
Okay.
You know, what's best, uh, thing is under the septic inspection, you know, well.
Right, right, exactly. And, and if you need to point to anything in the ordinance about what some of the driving forces, I, I would say page nine, page fourteen.
Okay.
Talk about those things. Now, the rules of conversion. Not in conversion anymore. Right, right, raise and replace.
Yeah, that's right, um, but.
And I would say, I would say.
Yeah, I, I, that's a question, you know.
We're gonna need spigots, toilets, showerheads, the whole plumbing. Run down, what's gonna be in there?
The new design, everything.
So, hon, how is that handled when you have, basically have a new, entirely new home attaching to an existing septic system?
I think you start over again. We'll table this, but I think he's gonna start with the whole application. All different set of information.
And just submit, like, an as-built of the, or, or whatever information exists for the existing system, rather than go through that process? Yeah, that, that, I mean, I only brought that up because I was, I didn't realize that this was a raise and.
No, that's good information, I wanna have.
Do you mind, do you mind if I advocate to that, to use the words raise and replace rather than transform? I mean, I understand transform is going to mean raise and replace, but just to make it clear, so that it's on.
Yeah, no, that definitely needs to be clarified, um, otherwise.
That's what I'm saying, maybe just start with the applications. Instead of scratching out this one.
Okay.
Can't go completely new, because, uh, he's got the grandfather from what's there. So, I think if we go to tear down.
Okay.
And, uh, replace. There's the way to go.
Okay.
Uh, but, no, you can't, I don't think you can start with just a new home permit, because you just can't do it, because they've got square footage out there.
Yeah, and, and the ordinance is specific to this circumstance of carrying down and, and building a new structure, replacing that structure. Regardless of the reasons.
It's a tear down, replace.
Yeah, right.
Raise and replace.
Otherwise, you get into the whole question of when it puts it back and all that.
Okay, so, are we on a good path?
Yeah.
Do you understand what we're coming, where we're coming from, and why?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll, uh, re-select the application.
Okay.
Alright, so, there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, guys.
So, we're gonna, I think we're gonna vote on, they're gonna take a motion and vote on it, second.
Yeah.
So.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, table the application, any additional information.
Thank you, mo- motion and seconded, any more discussion, any more questions? All those in favor of taking an application, so Pete?
Uh, yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig? Me, too, that's five in favor, none opposed, we're tableing this. Look forward to hearing from you again, thanks for your patience.
Thank you, yes.
Yes, thanks. Good evening.
Be a good project, buddy.
Right?
Yeah. Oh, I know, I know.
A fabulous contract, I like that contract. Takes money.
I'll have to, I, there's a site, there's a, it's not a good spot. It's tough.
A lot of one intentions.
It's, uh, uh, I'm fine. Please see. Is that resource protection in the area? And I don't, I have to look at the map, I don't remember that was.
I was in that guy's same shoes, that's when I did a find real close to the lake, but.
Right.
We jacked and put the foundation beneath it.
Right.
And then we basically preserved the footprint. And then we built from there.
Right.
You're right. When you just tear it down and just, you know, it's bigger fence jacketed it up and putting it down, and then you know, rebuilding from there.
Yeah. That's not uncommon for those lots squeezed between the lake and the.
There, you know?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's not resource protection.
I don't remember that it was, I just, I just asked. There are some places that are embarrassed, but then on this one.
It, it, uh, it's, it's hard. All these constructions having so hot, so close to the lake.
Yes.
It's, it's hard to, uh, dodging the, the people's strength from the ordinance. But the, the end goal here is to preserve the lake. And the health of the lake. So, um, I think if, if, uh, they are mindful of that, the owners can, while we're so, on bond, so.
Yes. It provides good context. All right, are we ready to move on to the, am I skipping CEO update, or do we do minutes first, then the CEO?
Yeah, I was gonna, CEO, the last one, so I wanna talk about it, uh.
No, I'll stay, I'll stay true to the agenda, so please do the minutes, and we'll go to you.
I didn't put the minutes on.
Okay. I don't know, how, how, how do you guys get, one, two minutes first, and then go to, yeah, okay? You okay? Whatever, minutes, minutes it is, let's do it. Does everybody have the minutes from both October sixth and September fifteenth?
Well, the fifteen was approved.
Oh.
But I, 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 I fixed them.
Oh, thank you.
I even fixed what you wanted about that line with Mr. Domba, right, I did add that.
So, okay.
Everybody, everybody should be comfortable about everything that you guys talk about it. I took every single suggestion as process there, so you guys wanna re- review it again, it's fine with me.
I'm, I'm good, I'm good with that, so we have just the sixth, that's correct?
Yeah.
And I wanna say thank you so much for doing this.
No, actually, this has been kind of fun, because I, I we're deep in the, in the ordinance and the rules and all that kind of stuff, like.
Yeah.
We're driving it, so.
Good, okay.
It's getting edge, we're, so.
Well, thank you, thanks, so let's take a few minutes to get, get through this.
And I will take up all the highlighting, I'm sorry, Mr. Seal, there's some like the highlights, so. I, uh, I kind of, uh.
Oh.
Uh, didn't tell about that one, I didn't discuss.
Geez, I'm having a good meeting on the fifteen.
Yes, you did.
It was a good meeting.
Yeah.
Is it, uh, yeah. You can still watch it, you know? It's all on demand.
Okay. Bill, we're okay to get into any comments, revisions, edits, or anything like that, so. Anybody have anything to bring up?
Um, a few spelling, spelling mistakes, um. Shane's last name is misspelled.
Again, there's not, it's not, is it, and so what is the real spelling of it? I gotta run again.
I'm here to get the spelling.
See?
I don't really, she don't really care how her name is spelled. It's Rose Marie, R O S E M A R E.
Would you go into the fast formation? My English is not my first language, you know?
So it's Rose Marie, all one word, M A R I E.
Okay.
Last name is spelled C H A. T.
Uh.
U.
Uh.
T.
Yeah, I understood for the, I was recording, instead of like P, I understood it B. Sorry, sorry about that.
It's okay, right? This is surrounded, uh, well, for everybody, uh, under new business, finished camp mode and application, uh, item F.
Yeah.
CEO versus COE.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, maybe I would suggest rather than, uh, so the, in the code enforcement officer, it must be notified, code enforcement officer must notify others, so eliminate the B and.
Okay.
And, um.
Yeah, change notified, change from notified to.
Notified.
Yeah.
The second page, uh, second paragraph in bold, um, Mr. Allen went to many Ls. Really all I got.
Should be reset.
Rather than present?
Yeah. That's right.
Just a T or a D?
Good one, good, good one.
I will get better at this, you, I'll get better at this.
And I don't have any, um, is there anything else, George?
No.
No, I, I didn't have anything else to add.
There, there was, I have, actually, a few things to add, it's, uh, there's a kind of font change in the page one.
Yes.
From the beginning of it, when I started doing the.
Yes.
Uh, A, B, C, there's a font change, I will fix that. And then also, I said that you guys are doing it at, at here, at ten thirty, it should have said eight thirty.
Oh.
Because the, the length of the meeting was two and a half hours, I'm not sure why I put ten.
It's not like ten thirty. Um, I, I just wanted to comment and, and compliment you on the quality of the meetings. So, thank you for doing that, I, for one, really like the idea of, if there's, um, uh, like, action.
Yeah.
I, I like that idea, including something like that, because that provides some useful information for everybody reading.
Including the applicant.
Yes, yeah, which is really nice, right? It's, so, thank you for including that.
Sure.
I hope that that is a model for what we continue to do. So, I have nothing else to add in terms of minutes.
And I would take all the highlighting out.
If we're done with minutes, can we go to the CEO?
Do we need to? So, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October sixth, uh, as amended.
Thank you. And then seconded, any more discussion? Thank you again, Sarah, for all the work, I really appreciate it. So, all those in favor of approving the amended minutes from September.
So, only us three can. How ironic, she wrote them, but she can't vote.
He wasn't here, so, that's right, so.
It's a great reading.
It's like a great novel. I'm like, who will do this? So, if we could take a vote, so, those of us that can vote, so, so George?
Yes.
Yes, and I, too, so three in favor, none opposed, amended minutes, thank you very much, appreciate that. So, minutes are concluded, can we go to the CEO updates, if you would, so. Tom has bought some software I work. I'm playing with the software that they purchased.
So.
Nope. Basically, it's, um, I work will allow people to submit their. Applications online in much detail, uploading many images. Blueprints, other documents. So basically, it's making us totally transparent with our filing system. Anybody can log in the public to see the documents that have been proven to this. So it's cool. They cannot edit or alter in any way, but they see them, print them, and we're not. Part of the. Application. While they're filling out their permits or applications for permit is contractors. They can visibility drop down with contractors. So hopefully that theirs will be on there. They don't have to manually input it. So I'm putting in contractor information, especially, you know, and I'm trying to make it special with the D E P designation. And, you know, specialties. So put the word out to whoever you know to bring me their card brochure or something. And make sure I get their information as after if I can, because this is a build as you go. Right. I'm not from here. I don't have contractors that are friends. So everybody's new to me, right?
Can you get that list from the state? Yeah, all the contractors.
Not everybody's active in this area.
Right.
You could get a partial list, but it wouldn't be everything.
Or I can get a list that has way too much information.
Right.
And not every contractor wants to be on the list. I've spoken to some. They say I'm too busy already. Word of mouth is all I need. I don't want. I'm taking Jane calling for quotes.
Oh, yeah.
Getting a quote.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's just one thing.
So the online has a dropdown that you can pick.
While they're filling out their application. See if their contractors on our list already. It's a great opportunity for contractors that do want more business or are D E P certified and want to specialize. Yeah, that we can offer that and kind of weed out, make the job easier for everybody involved.
Sure.
Second thing is, at the very bottom of your packet, you'll see an application that was put through. And approved by the CEO. And I want to bring this to your attention because. Well, is this the kind of thing that you would have wanted to have seen come for you versus being put through by the CEO?
So this is for Steve McGovern. And he proposed to. Build a 1500 square foot home, a new septic to be installed.
And this is a conforming structure. Like a forming lot.
It is.
Or is it not in the shoreline zone?
It is entirely. Every inch. And they cleared down the well going to be about 30 foot from the shoreline. So if it's in the shoreline zone, we want to see it.
So this is what I thought. Yeah, you know, they've already cut everything too.
They've cut, they've checked, they've cleared, they've staked it out. They put in a sorry, very sorry looking so bad. Doesn't come around very often, but. So I'm just wondering, I saw this got through and I'm. It's kind of too late now, but I wanted to know. Why my thinking was pushed through another launch.
So this is, is a conforming or non-conforming law?
So it's.
Because, you know, depending on the district, you're well within your rights to. Process. You know, if it's in the limited residential, limited commercial and the general development. For a conforming law, the only time a planning board approval would be required for a conforming law would be at a conforming structure. Back would be in the, in the. Resource protection. Well, not resource protect, resource protector would be prohibited if it was the. I guess that's the. S P would say that the slope, no, S P stream protection. And that's, there's hardly any of that.
Yeah.
So. I guess it's more a question of. You know, are you comfortable in that, doing that at this point in time or wanted and or have us look at it? Given that you're relatively new or would you? I mean, I, I'm, you know, as far as I'm concerned, there's no better way to learn than to do it.
Two of the spaces this summer. We have an application where it's just exactly what you described, right? And, and Richard could just do it on his own. So the applicant was banging the doors, hey, why the CEO is not signing this? Why I have to go to you guys? And said, this is process, you guys are difficult. The person, this person I know, you gotta put it through the process. And because Richard was new, he brought it to avoid. We listened. Yeah, he can sign the law.
Right.
So I think this, this was the second one that came about. And I think I wanted to say that. Mr. Baker said it was going to be in one of the packages to go to us and Mr. Baker cut it right off. And he said, no, Richard, you can do that one because of that, that particular worst. But it's not easy to get to that stipulation.
Yeah. But you're right. Richard was somewhat uncomfortable because it was early in his tenure. And, and put it in the packet anyway. We reviewed it, but he went, he actually ended up signing it.
I mean, that's kind of where I am. I see what it is, how much we cleared and then. The, the cleared square foot is, yeah, every bit of what's listed here. After, after seeing it, this, this was brought to my attention by a member of the public. Right. You will. And then. And the lot is kind of a hard one to identify on the map accurately. Some people were referencing the wrong lot number looking for a permit and there wasn't one. So I would spend the.
Oh, okay.
Trying to. Living vines and everything else in my last. Dotting my I's and crossing my T's, I discovered this was not the lot number that was brought to me.
The vacant, the vacant lot or the building I don't know.
It's vacant. Vacant of trees and everything.
There's no building in this, George. This is the vacant lot. Never a building.
Right.
It's gonna clear.
Right. Yeah, no, I understood that, Peter.
I'm just getting my horse clearing.
On the bringing in the fill. I mean, there's one, how much fill can be brought?
Oh, that's a different thing now, yeah.
Yeah, limited. Well, it's very unsafe. And the other, the question there of where they've taken down some trees, what's put to me every path with 10 feet or 18?
Six.
Six, okay. And I think it could be more than that. And then there's more trees cut down wider than, you know, 16, you know, it's kind of cleared out.
Well, that's a percentage you're gonna do the formula for that.
Yeah.
The only way to do that is to have a little bit of stones. And as far as fill, I mean, they're going to generate all of the fill, a lot of their failure rate from that foundation hole. So it's behind 100 feet in this really. Not much limitation on fills.
So. I mean, it's more about the soil erosion.
Control yourself, that's the control. But it's filled behind 100 feet. Is. Of that, but I'd be concerned with the cutting.
We have chipped up a lot of it. We got two big piles of logs. We're just gonna plan to use that. I'll say.
Do we have any pictures at all photographs?
Interesting.
I just asked where it's at.
Red Oaks Lodge.
No, you're on the lake, you come in. No, I know right up. Yeah, I looked at the house when it was for sale. Oh, no, making lot. Is this the one at the very end of Red Oaks Lodge?
Yeah.
See, my brother tried buying that lot. Scott tried buying that lot years ago and the town wouldn't allow it. It wasn't being built on. We didn't buy it.
Well, it's one acre. It's big enough to build.
I will know. I didn't think it had enough shore frontage or whatever it was. There was some stipulation. No, Scotty looked at that. Yeah, it can be a mission.
That's the entrance. It's hard to say. I can't tell.
You can't.
This is the whole, this is, this is one lot, right?
Which.
Big.
It's part B. So is it just a ranch field on two different properties?
No, newly built. And their well is.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's gonna be like over here on right near war. Which I'm a note, they cleared extra just to probably get the rig into.
So this is after the fact essentially.
Now, this is our primary.
Yeah, it was permitted.
Oh, it was permitted.
Yeah, I know. Just. Point of learning.
And so there was a change, she raised a good question about. The, the, you know, is something that we had been problematic in some cases in the past. The, the house may be able to get back 100 feet, but it doesn't have enough shore frontage or, or. Even though it may have a total acreage that's fine. So that's just something to keep an eye out.
That's that 200.
Under the minimum lot size ordinance as well as this ordinance.
So you're saying that it does have 200, well, feet of shore frontage? I'm only asking not to split hairs, but I'm just thinking that if it has less than that, wouldn't that could then fall into a non-performing lot? Is that right? Right. Because you could have a non-performing lot that still needs minimum lot size requirements to be one acre.
Well, we had a vacant lot. He didn't want to put a building on it. It's only 20 feet. The thing is, it isn't. You can't. My brother didn't buy that lot. It was like 20 feet short or something like that.
And that's what I'm wondering. That's what I'm wondering.
We're gonna find out how wide this was.
Yeah, it's quite a convoluted shoreline. Which complicates.
But I thought it's got to be. From point to point, though. It doesn't go in or that. So you're gonna measure from pin to pin.
Okay.
For your shoreline.
Get told from this, you know. I'm using my pen. I'm thinking it's got under 200 feet.
Yeah.
I've always for the house. So that's probably it. So it's less than 200, 100 feet of. Why you buy it? Yeah. Pete, that's probably what it was.
Yeah. I might now look at the property and I think. What I take, take a look at.
Yeah.
How would our actions be at this point when they started permitting?
I don't know.
I think the first thing would be to go to town's lawyer.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, that's right.
If it's that, if it's that squirrely.
Well, particularly.
There is a separate permit.
So, yeah.
It didn't have much site information.
Yes, I would second Peter's advice instead, you know. Discussing this with the town attorney, he's on retainer. So we've already paid for his time. The. That, you know, it's now come to your attention after issuing the permit that this is actually a non-conforming lot because it doesn't have 200. I would verify that in there.
Be tomorrow first.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and. And see, you know, see what he's, what he says. I don't have anything.
We didn't want to confirm this, I believe, when you measure. Go from pin to pin. So you don't go down and you don't do all this. I believe that's been brought up before and some of our. Permanent. I may be wrong, but we checked to see how you measure that shoreline.
Craig, I think you're right. Because I think, I think we've talked about it a couple of times and. You know, maybe under the best of intentions, someone's like, oh, well, just measure all these, you know, in dens and out dens and stuff, but. I think you're right.
Yeah, I, I think you're right too. And shore frontage is defined the length of a lot bordering on a water body or wetland measured in a straight line.
Yeah.
Between the intersections of the lot lines with the shoreline. So it is pin to pin.
Yeah, because a lagoon would give you 200 feet even if it's on.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it worked that way. Which I didn't know, actually.
As compared to the 3000 miles of coastline or whatever it means.
Call my brother tomorrow and let him know there's a house being built.
Oh, God.
It's been cleared. There's no.
It's all record anyways.
Scotty's gonna be.
Yeah. So.
I'm guessing with the, you know, whatever the attorney says, do that. My guess is they say, maybe there, there is a process for reversing the permit and. And at that point, then it would be a permit that needs to be filed with us because it's a non-conforming law.
Right. But you said it was 20 feet shy.
That's, I'm, I'm trying to recollect.
Yeah.
That's a news, get a surveyor out there and let you know how big, how much it is.
Yeah. You said you had a hard time finding this on the town tax man.
I did.
So the house is already there?
No.
But clearing what, what we saw in the photos.
They've staked it out. A surveyor has been there to stake it out. And well site has been designated. Well, it's not been drilled. No septic has been put in here. It's very rough.
Is, is there anywhere to put a system, system work? But to feel this out.
You gotta talk, you should talk to a charitable friend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, one way they approach the. Practical matter of what's the shore frontage, the actual measurement, if the tax map is. Squirrely or whatever would be put the burden on them and ask that their surveyor to provide. A distance measurement, you know, in the pen. Do that easily with their.
This is just an example why I'm like big on the butters. Because those people that own on either side of those. Would be, you know, if they were made aware of this, then they would know from past things that had happened. You know, permits applied for prospective buyers or whatever. You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's a good point.
But there's, yes, so that's an easy measure.
Yeah. One thing I'd like to advocate for too is, is. As we develop the agenda. To put clearly on the agenda when an application comes in, if we're talking about a non-conforming lot or a conforming lot or. Non-conforming structure, whatever. Just for public record, I mean, we would be hearing it for certain reasons, but it's very good to distinguish straight away.
Too bad we didn't put a place for that when we redesigned the application.
We were squeezed for space.
Yeah, we were. Yeah, no, as it was, we started reducing font sizes and playing all kinds of games.
We can already do it for. Or we have to.
No, we, we redid this once, right? And we tried to make it.
One page.
One page and it's comprehensive as we could, one page.
We're gonna put a line here.
That didn't feel good about one time, that's why I wanted to bring it here, let y'all view it.
Thank you.
Town attorney is quite good.
Is there anything else? If you wanted to provide for updates, that's all I got.
How many obligations we have in that month?
Three or four.
Two or four.
That's that time of year, boys trying to.
Next meeting, we're gonna have the public hearing. And. There's a guy from across the. Across the highway here, that car dealer. Layout. It's nothing, nothing too big.
The other item, you asked me to provide the warrants for the next duty. I just want to make sure we have time for it is that. Especially with a new standard condition of approval for shoreline zones, the one to do that.
I do, okay, I do, all right. I'll send that to you tomorrow. So it'd be an agenda item. It's just the language for that. Anything else?
Does anyone have, anyone else heard of a LD 2003? No. I happen to have friends in the more planning ward at town near this one. And apparently this just hit the road and the state house. It's a legal document, 2003, and it's an act to implement the recommendations of the commission, the commission to increase. Housing opportunities in Maine.
Oh.
By studying zoning and land use restrictions.
Yeah.
And this person that somehow got their feet wet in this whole thing, says that this is gonna be a nightmare.
Is, is this to allow secondary homes on the, on a.
Yeah.
Right, this, this hit the news. A little bit ago, man.
Yeah. I, you know, sir, my own reaction to that is I don't know that that will have much effect in the rate.
Okay.
Um, because we don't, first off, we don't have zoning. So. The only place that I would be concerned would be if somebody wanted to put a little. You know, mini house on a lot, say down into the village or someplace like that where the septic would be a real problem. But I, I think this is gonna be a big issue for towns like South Portland, you know, the suburbs of Portland. Or contentious issue, but I'm not sure, maybe I'm wrong, you know, I, I can't say that I've studied it, but. I don't know.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Good point.
It has got a lot of reaction, that's for sure.
I think we're done. Are we, are we? Okay, thank you, Craig.
I second that.
All in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you all. We're done.